It's five, so I guess we can get this, uh, get this going. So yeah, welcome to the, um, Rules and Government Relations Meeting of October 1st, 2020. It's 5:00 PM. As per the last six months, our meeting is being conducted remotely and, uh, on Zoom per Charlie Baker's orders. That will also be, uh, thrown up online and on YouTube via East Hampton Media. Was that good? I don't have a thing in front of me.
You're good.
All right, sweet. So tonight, we have, let's just go over the real quick and, uh, what things we want to cover.
Do you want to approve the minutes of 8:27?
Yeah, let's start with that. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
A second.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I heard an aye from Council Rest. I'm an aye, so that passes unanimously. Okay, so, uh, I was going to, uh, let me think, go with that. The, uh, yeah, I, I think what, what I wanted to talk about tonight was definitely the, um, the, uh, voting locations thing. And then, um, if we get to it, I, I, I don't know, uh, how much we can really, how much progress we can make on the, um, uh, amend classification and pay plan for the health director without speaking to the mayor, but I'm comfortable discussing that if, if, if you two are.
Was she not able to make it tonight, Tom?
I wonder if she forgot.
What, Tom, sir?
I haven't heard from her either way.
Maybe when we're done, we can text her and see if she's able to come on, but.
Yeah, yeah, that might be a good idea. I don't really want to go too deep into, uh, talking about ordinance review since I promised a lot of people we would, uh, I'd sort of push that out and publicize it when we got to it, but if you want to just at the end sort of talk a little bit about next steps there and how to sort of frame that, uh, I'm fine. I think the other two things on our agenda were sort of pending some more information. So does that sound like a good sort of goal for tonight is work through the polling location, see if we can't get something done on the health director stuff and then just sort of frame the discussion for ordinance review and then call it?
Yep, that sounds good.
Great. Okay, so let's get started with discussing, uh, the polling locations.
I'm gonna share the polling report.
Okay.
Um, I did talk to, uh, or JP, I, I don't know if he copied you, but he had an issue, Barbara, with this line here.
That's fine.
And I had no problem getting rid of it. I, I don't know why it bothers him, but he didn't want to confuse people.
Well, the why it bothers him, Dan, is that not all of District 1 people passed by East Hampton High School. I don't.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't.
Yeah, it's fine. It's a non, yeah.
I, I, I have no problem with it. I mean, it's no make or break thing for me. Omar, how do you feel about this? Uh, this is your precinct too, besides me and JP.
I'm okay with it. I, um, like I said at the full city council meeting, I agree with Barbara. There was, was a mess at Whitebrook and I think, um, if we can do something better for the constituents going to a safer place, um, I, I'm a hundred percent in.
So, okay, great.
Barbara, you're gonna publish this on the web tomorrow? You want to get it out by tomorrow?
Well, it needs to be out three days before, yeah, before your vote.
Okay.
I mean, I'll have to get it tomorrow, but sooner the better.
I'll send it to you immediately, but the only thing that's changing is right after 2 eliminate these lines. Unless anybody else sees some editing that needs to be done. Barbara gave us this and I added a couple of things here that she wanted.
Yeah, I mean, you, you have to look at it, you know, to make sure that it's not, that it's not impacting people on a, you know, basis of race, disability, income, those are the, the important points. I, yeah, so.
And, and so, um, we have always had accommodations for those folks who maybe could not get to the poll. We have, uh, early voting, we have mail-in voting. There's no difference, um, if they had been getting help getting there because of the COA, they will still get help getting to the polling station if they need to. There's nothing different that going here is going to bring, so I, I don't have, you know, I read through the whole thing. I think it's very clear and, um, it, it's probably just an easier, it's probably more accessible than Whitebrook, actually.
Uh, let me show you the map of the building. I have, I had done this for Barbara and we went over the school the other day and there's even more space, um, trying to get people in and out safely. There's a wide path here. Barbara will put gates to block people here. They come in here, but they're able to go out this door. And there is an accessible door here for anybody, uh, in a wheelchair, for instance, who doesn't have an assistive to get in. And that was important to Barbara.
And Barb, how are we, um, the only thing that kind of stuck out to me was the entrance and exit for precincts one and two will be the same door. So is there going to be kind of a, a gatekeeper so that people aren't like passing or are we concerned about people passing each other?
Well, when Dan and I went out and looked at it, um, actually there are two doors. So what we thought we would do is have, uh, ones, you know, like the right side be the indoor with a.
For everybody?
For, for all, for the one and, for one and two. And then the out, when they're leaving, they would go on the other side. So you can see there's, there's two and we would put like a little divider down the middle. Now precincts three, four, and five would go in the other door and they'd go, they'd be routed right into the gym, so.
And she's gonna block this with gates so you can't make a mistake and go there.
There's like a little fence thing that we would put to, to keep the three, four, and five away from the other ones.
Yes.
And these are four-foot doors, so that helps a lot. They're big doors, so these two doors could be separated.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, not to say that everybody's gonna follow and do exactly right, but I mean, it is the door that you'd probably go in, you know, like you're driving, you know, it's on that side, so.
Okay, and, and masks are mandatory and, and all of that stuff is still, okay?
Yes, and we have 25 boxes of, um, of hand sanitizer, masks, gloves, 25 boxes, so.
That should be enough.
We can practically give one to every voter.
Where, um, where will those be, the boxes?
Don't know. I'm thinking like, like maybe kind of for precincts one and two, it would be kind of at the bottom of the stairs, like, like when they come in, like there. Like, yeah, that general area. And then, and then the other one, it would be kind of where they're walking in. That worked well for the other, for the last election.
I don't see why they're not in the entry vestibule here.
I see that Councilor Gomez has had his hand up for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. I just want a, for clarification, uh, to Councilor Coniff, um, when we vote at, at Whitebrook, we use the same doors too. So we go into the same and get out to the same door, so.
But aren't they really, really wide?
I think the high school are wider than that one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Usually, usually at White, at Whitebrook, only one of the doors is, is usable.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And there's no school? And did you check with Allison about cafeteria workers? They were working here?
I did not have a chance, no, but I, I think they can, you know, they'll go someplace else. They'll, they'll go down, they'll, you know, they'll understand.
I think you should put your masks in the entry vestibule so people don't walk in without a mask. If people come without a mask, they have to put one on before they go in, right?
Yeah.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, well, three, four, and five, we'll have it in, in the actual, like, paged in area. That's what we did before and it worked really well. Um, and the other one, you know, I mean, when we're setting up, we'll figure that, those little details out. Now, this isn't a set in stone. I'm, I'm probably gonna move some things around a little bit.
I think one of the things you'll probably run into, I see, see these X's guys are the six-foot distance, is you may have a big line out here.
Well, we, we hardly ever do and you, you can have a line, you know.
Okay.
I, I, you know, rarely do we get much of a line and remembering that the big majority of people will have already voted. I mean, I'm thinking we'll maybe get 30%.
All right.
So it's, it's not like a normal, um, state election.
I, I think that you're probably right there. Um, the one, one thing that I wonder is even if you were at 30%, are you at all concerned about, um, parking?
Well, normally I, that is my big concern at the high school. Um, Allison has said that even the teachers will be, uh, working remotely that day, so we're gonna have the whole parking lot and there's not much more I can do about that.
There's quite a bit of parking if there's no school. I was over there.
But that, I mean, nor, normally, and I think we have to look ahead to next November, um, parking is the issue at, at the high school. Even if there's no school, if there's teachers there, um, it's, it's not very big. So I, this, this vote that you're taking needs to probably go through next November as well.
Well, you have that in the letter and actually, didn't you say to me that we have to vote again to move it back to Whitebrook?
You do.
So we'd have to do another report and everything, so if we choose to do that, we have to go through this again.
Right.
So this lasts until we decide to move it back?
Yep.
Okay.
And she's suggesting until we get the new school.
Yep.
Yeah, that.
Makes sense to me.
Makes sense. So, yeah, and I guess then the important thing is, you know, if people are worried about, um, lines or congestion or parking, whatever, to just make sure that they know to vote early, um, so that they can avoid all that stuff.
Yeah, or, or, you know, go in the kind of off times. I mean, that's, it's busiest in the morning and then maybe after work, but there's other times that, you know, they might, might be able to go at an off time, more of an off time.
Right. I mean, I remember when I voted in the presidential primary, uh, that was the first time I've ever experienced a line, but there were two ballots that day, uh, so it's a little bit, it was a little bit.
Oh, right, yeah, that, yeah, that, oh my God. And there were, there were two check-ins. We're gonna be using poll pads at all the precincts. We won't have a, a checkout table, um, but we will only have one poll pad at each precinct, so, um, it, it could slow down, things down a little bit.
Okay. Um, well, in that case, um.
Make a motion for you?
Sure, yeah.
I move that we accept the, uh, poll report and submit it to the full council for a vote this winter.
Second.
Motion a second. Council Rest?
Aye.
Council Coniff?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Um, all right, well, uh, that passes unanimously, so we'll discuss it, uh, this coming Wednesday.
And Barbara, if you're gonna publish, publish that map on the internet too. That would be good for people to see.
Yep, yep.
I forgot to tell you all that she got some electric signs. There's gonna be a lot of signage that will help people know that they're still gonna go to Whitebrook and don't know to go to the high school, I think, so.
Okay, great.
Right, and, yeah, but we will, we will have to do our best to put the word out there, um, code red, social media, Facebook, um, website, signs, yeah.
I think the reminder is a good place to.
Yeah, I already, I talked to them today about it and told them to reach out to me next week. Yep.
Great. Okay.
Dan, are you gonna, are you gonna send that to me, um, pretty quickly or, I mean, by tomorrow or?
How's right now?
That's perfect. I'll do it before I leave.
I'm just texting the mayor to see if she.
I just did, Tom.
Great, beat me to it. Great. Um, okay, well, while we're waiting to see about that, do you want to talk a little bit about, um, the, uh, ordinance review and that whole process?
Sure.
Okay, so I guess the first question is like, um, is there a time maybe in the, the week of the, I was thinking maybe the week of the 12th, um, where you two would be available to, for a, what might be a, like a slightly longer meeting if, you know, if we get, I don't know if we'll get a lot of people, but I think there's a chance.
Well, I have a finance meeting on the 14th, but that's all I have. I don't know what Omar and other people have. Is Thursday available that night?
The calendar.
Oh, I have CPA.
You have a ranked choice voting, Tom.
Yep.
I have CPA on the 15th.
And I have senior tax. So how about the 12, uh, 13th? Ordinance?
I've got ordinance.
Um, there's also the CRC, which kind of is a conflict, actually.
All right, what if we pushed it back and did it on the 22nd?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we should make notice to everybody to talk about that.
Yeah, I just figured it would be good. I, I, I really want to make sure we get this right, so I figured, uh, and.
Are we gonna call that, are we gonna call that a public hearing or just our meeting with public, like, how are we going to let people know that we really want them to speak on this topic? Or are we?
Problem call, I, I definitely do. Um, I guess we can, you know, we can call it a public hearing.
Well, you have two council meetings to announce it.
Yep.
Yes.
You have the 7th.
Two council meetings to announce.
14th. And I think the only thing we should discuss is that night. I'm curious, the topics that we would want to imagine are the makeup of the committee, timeline, and how many ordinance, like there's three, I think there's 300 pages of zoning ordinances, so I'm curious.
Yeah.
Do you want to get into how we're gonna do it? And I'm curious how we, how we divide it up so that we don't put everything on the city attorney. That could get expensive and I'm hoping you can do something like that, I don't.
Yeah, and is the expectation, and I hope the answer to this is no, is the expectation that the city attorney will be attending any of these meetings?
I would suspect probably not.
So, so anything we would have, we would have him review anything that we were concerned about or any changes we were gonna make? It's the only time we'd bring him in.
I think the word supervision in the charter is up to interpretation. To me, it means send him the ordinances you want to change and make sure he's okay with it.
Right.
If you're not touching an ordinance, and I think the, one of the things you mentioned, Tom, was that ACLU attorney, somebody who has legal knowledge being on the committee and help us target the ordinances that you're worried about, that we're worried about.
Yeah.
Once we get to those, you know, the committee can change the language, but I think the main thing is shifting through everything. And I don't wanna, I don't want to go over zoning because zoning may have some systemic racism built into it too, so.
I, I would say most American zoning does, but, uh, peg, sorry.
Yeah, so I just wanna, um, I just want to make sure that if we're gonna have an ACLU attorney, that in fact they are an attorney, um, and, and we need to be just really clear on the, the requirements of having an ACLU attorney present, what that means, how much power they're gonna have over anything we're gonna do. If they're just a member and they have input, we just need to set those parameters since they are outside the, the parameters of our committee.
Yes.
Well, I was hoping they were East Hampton resident. I thought we had somebody in mind, no?
Well, no, there's one of the folks, uh, who, who helped, uh, me and, uh, Omar with, um, with the, the thing that we were doing, uh, with the facial recog recognition, who isn't in fact, is not, there, it's the ACLU has attorneys, but is more of like a, more of an organizer, but who, who I think could be really helpful, not necessarily even as a member of the committee, because I don't think they're an East Hampton resident, but who could really be potentially helpful in connecting the committee to resources and experts and stuff like that. Helpful. There's at least one attorney who is an East Hampton resident who's personally reached out and said that they'd like to be on the committee, so it's like, and I, and I haven't really been keeping too thorough of an inventory of who's reached out, just because it seems, well, first of all, it's not my call and second of all, it's a little preliminary, but they're like, there certainly are legal minds who would be interested in participating in this, but for that, what I'm really more interested in and what I thought, um, you know, the ACLU might be valuable partner in, looking at this stuff and, and just trying to contextualize some of it.
Sure, yeah.
And to bring in people who maybe like, if, if we get to some area and we, then something looks a little weird to say like, oh, let's actually talk to someone who knows a lot about this stuff and maybe we can invite in some experts to talk about that stuff, more so than actually like having, I like, I, you know, with all due respect to the ACLU, who I respect a lot as an organization, like this is gonna be, you know, an East, an East Hampton, you know, committee, but I do think that having, having someone who has, who has the ability to quickly access people who know a lot about stuff and can offer some like subject matter perspective, I think could be really, um.
Agreed.
In terms of the zoning, uh, like that, that's sort of the stuff that I really definitely want to discuss, um, and I think the one thing, there, there's definitely gonna be, I think, some people who want to approach that. There's definitely also gonna be, I, I do think the one thing that's relevant is that we did hire a consultant to look at our zoning recently and, um, that report, I believe, is fairly imminent. The last time I talked to Jeff about it was July or August and he said October, which it currently is, so, um, I don't know if that timeline has changed, but the point is that like, that might be a thing we've kind of already paid somebody to do up to a certain point, um, so that might be maybe something that we don't, um, immediately address, but we, I, I don't know, leave the door open for that committee to process some of what that consultant gets or whatever. I don't want to like rule things out, but I do want to, to also be mindful of not committing them to doing anything that they can't realistically do in a manageable timeframe. But yes, membership, process is another thing, like, so say that, um, this is like a, a big question for me is, um, okay, say, say that, um, the committee comes upon something that is just silly and outdated and doesn't serve any purpose at that time, that's a pretty, that's pretty easy, right? They can recommend to the council that that be removed. But say that they come upon something where it, like everyone kind of agrees it's important that we have some ordinance on this topic, but there's elements of it that are tricky and it really requires a little bit of rework. The question then is, does that committee handle that or do they say, do they, like, do they more produce a report for the council saying, "We have some problems with this. We recommend that it be reworked. Here are some suggestions we have," and then that goes to ordinance or public safety or somewhere to actually process like that whole thing? Uh, Council Rest?
I, I, I think there's two degrees on that. One is if it's simple language change, that someone targets, hey, you don't want to say this, this has some, some issue with it, uh, with regard to racism or anything, and we just want to eliminate one line in an ordinance, that may be something the committee can do, in my mind, but if it is a complete reworking, that's a report that, that we send it to ordinance for review. I think you're right about that. I, I just think it's a matter of going, people who are on the committee are gonna have to do some homework, reading through the ordinances and finding ones that they wonder, hey, what does this mean? Does it mean something other than what it's saying? Is there a underhanded way of saying, you know, it's, it's racist in some way? Because that was your main goal. You're looking for systemic racism.
Yeah.
There's probably a lot of ordinances that are way out of date that deal with things that, from when the town was adopted. So I don't know if you want to skip over those or, that, that's something that the committee is gonna have to decide when they form, how far do they want to go?
I certainly don't want to, um, while I, while I definitely want to keep the focus on, on, on systemic racism, if there's just stuff in there that shouldn't be in there, I don't, I don't, I don't want to tie their hands on just pointing that out. I do think that, um, there's potentially, um, some real value in, uh, in, in stating clearly in, when we form this thing, that it's the expectation of the council that anybody on the committee, um, like reads through, like, they don't need to read the whole thing in one go, but like, if, like, whatever section is on the agenda, that they've read that section of the ordinance through thoroughly prior to the meeting so that it's not like just a bunch of people sitting around in a room digesting something for the first time and going, "How do you feel about this? How do you feel about this?"
Did you, did you feel that way?
That's kind of what we did with the charter review.
I felt that way with the charter review, that not everybody did their homework, but that was.
Yeah, I mean, I just think we could, we could probably, um, uh, we, we could, we could streamline that whole thing. Uh, Council Coniff?
You know, one thing you may want to consider when you put this committee together is to give individuals sections and it is their responsibility to present those sections to the committee in a timeline fashion. So, meeting number one, these three people are gonna tell all of us and educate all of us about these ordinances, so it puts it, the responsibility on specific people to present back to you. That way you know everyone's kind of up to speed on it, otherwise you're gonna have exactly that where you're gonna have a lot of, ah, ah, ah.
So.
Yeah.
Council Rest?
I have a question. This committee, the Rules Committee, should decide, A, what is the size of the committee, how it's going to be formed and the membership of it, how many citizens, how many councilors, et cetera? Also, what Peg just said, are we gonna put together rules for the committee on process and parameters? Or do we let the committee decide that once they meet for the first time? I, I'd just like to know what we're gonna present to the council for a vote, besides, we recommend that the committee be this size and that they start their work and, I mean, it, it, it's, it's gonna be a heavy commitment. It's two meetings a month if you really want to get something done.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it's one of those things where we can probably, if there's things that we as the Rules Committee feel strongly about or that the council feels strongly about, I certainly think that we can put certain parameters there and then I think that beyond that, the committee will have a certain amount of leeway to determine its own parameters.
But we will define like the number and where those numbers are coming from, like how many councils, how many residents, that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
And like if there's.
We should do that after our public input, Tom, that you're gonna try and do on the, what would you say, the 22nd?
Yeah, so I, I think like personally, th- this feels like, I think we're all on the same page about what we're looking for, so let's do a public hearing on the 22nd with just pushing out like really broadly, like, we're going to be forming this thing. We're really interested in your feedback, particularly when it comes to issues such as how many members, what sort of like experience are we looking for, how many, like, are councilors? Is there any other committees that should be sending a representative? But also sort of the scope, are we just looking at the ordinances itself? What about traffic rules and orders? What about zoning? Um, and then, you know, in terms of like the process, like, how do these things get processed, what's expected of the members? And just really leave that open for people to come and speak their mind on all of that stuff. And, um, then we, uh, we take, so once we have that information, we can then deliberate and if we need a second meeting to do it, like, to work on that, that's fine, but, you know, probably fairly soon after that meeting, we should probably have, um, a, a document that we can break, you know, that, that meeting is, um, directly, like, the 22nd is right after a city council meeting, so like, if it's not too ambitious, I wouldn't mind the idea of, of hopefully having something to report back to the council at our first November meeting.
I would like that because, you know, you're gonna want to get this done maybe before the election in the 21. We only have a year to get this done with the same council, anyway.
Right, you'd want it done.
Remember the charter with the. Remember the charter, was it, stay a year in the charter, like it did for the, I don't remember.
Yeah. Um, I don't know if it, but it, that sounds familiar.
We'll see what happens. I'll look at it again.
Okay.
The mayor did not text me back, by the way, Tom.
Okay. Well, um, is this, is your understanding that this is a, a time sensitive matter?
I don't know anything about it. Um, what I think I know is the health director position. I believe that Bree will do both positions, an agent and a director, and that as a role of the director, she has more authority to do things than as the health agent. But that's the kinda question I had for the mayor. How, Bree does both jobs, but what is the difference? And, cause I don't think she's cre, she's looking to, there may be in the future a separate position, but I, I think it's one position. Bree's still the health agent, but she'll also be the health director. Kinda like when we combine the treasurer and, and the.
Well, she just, well, I don't know. She, so I, I think the, the agent that we're gonna be able to hire, the assistant agent, whatever, in the budget will be the agent. And, you know, I don't wanna necessarily suggest that this position is for Bree, although sure, logically, it makes sense that she would get promoted into this role, assuming she fits all the criteria. But the, the basic premise is that we don't have a department head for the health department. And so this position, regardless of who may or may not sit in it, is a required position, I think, for us to kinda have a department head that oversees it.
Okay.
The one thing we could do is, if you guys are feeling like it is, to, um, maybe say we don't have a recommendation, cause the mayor wasn't here, and bring it up to the council to debate it at that time. I don't know the timeline on this.
I was gonna say.
Not be that fast. Maybe we can do it, cause the next time we're meeting is the 22nd, with the rules committee. And we don't want this on that agenda. We want to do the, right?
Right. And it's plausible that they wanna move that forward. So I guess that's what I, what I'll do is, um, but if, if it's, if everyone is, is okay with that course of action, what I would do is, are, cause are we gonna have to set a public hearing for this?
It is an ordinance, right, Barbara? This is an ordinance. It's a creation of a new, changing the pay plan. So the public health agent has.
Yeah, it needs, yeah, it's, it's adding a position to the pay plan. So you need to have a, there needs to be an ordinance, a, a public hearing. Yep.
Okay. So what I'm gonna recommend we do is, Dan suggested that at, at our next meeting, to, to present it and say that we, we weren't able to speak to the mayor, it seems sensible, but we, you know, we wanna have a further discussion. So set a public hearing. And we can just have that conversation when we do the public hearing.
Well, we could have the conversation, um, this Wednesday. But you don't have a recommendation, we could have a conversation with the mayor and schedule the public hearing.
Yeah, that's true.
It, to me, it seems straightforward, as Peg said. There has to be a director. Who it is is, I, I don't have any question as to that. I, I, I think the question that will come up is, are we hiring a new person? Is there going to be two different people? Where is the budget coming from? I mean, I don't think that's the case. I think this is designed to create the position that Bree would step into, but I'm speaking out of turn. I don't know for sure.
Well, and I have the, the same question. So, but I think we could just move forward with this and, and with the mayor.
Remember too, that this just creates a position and in order to fill it, you, they'd need to have money for it.
Exactly. It's a whole different animal.
It's, it's, you know, you can make as many positions as you want, but unless you have the money for it. It's, yeah.
Well, they could, they can move the money that's paying the agent into the position. This is their intent. In other words, it's.
Well, but that's not what we're voting on.
No. Yeah, that's a.
We're creating a position.
For another day. So, yeah, I, Councilor Coniff, how do you feel about that?
I think that's totally fine. I think we could absolutely have the conversation with the mayor at city council and get some of these questions answered. And then we can set the public hearing, you know, predicated on that. So.
Our obligation is to have a discussion at the committee level. We have often had no recommendations coming out. So we've had the discussion, we have questions. So at the, at the, uh, this Wednesday's meeting, I'd like to ask these questions of the mayor so that we have a sense of them.
Okay. So we can have that discussion. And then if we're comfortable with it, then I'll, uh, set a public hearing for our next meeting. So do we need to make a motion to move it back without recommendation?
My move to move the health agent to the city council without recommendation.
Second.
Motion a second. Uh, Councilor Coniff?
Aye.
Councilor Rest?
Yeah.
May I vote yes? All right. So that passes three to zero. Um, we've discussed everything that we set out to discuss today. So unless anyone has anything else they want to cover, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Councilor Rest?
Aye.
Councilor Coniff?
Aye.
May I vote aye? All right.
Hey, a 36 minute meeting, Tom. You, you're my hero.
And so our next meeting is gonna be on the 22nd, right?
Yes.
At what time? Five, six, five?
Oh, that's a good point. Can we do it at six? Just because I think some people have a tough time getting to 5:00 PM meetings. And this is kinda big.
That's fine with me.
All right.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
All right. We'll see you guys. Barbara, did you get it?
I did. It's, um, I redid the agenda. I added it to the bottom of the agenda and I posted it on the website. And I'm gonna put it on the bulletin board.
Can you add that combined, uh, map? I think that would be good for the.
Shoot, I didn't do that.
On, on the agenda.
Ah, ugh.
And not to give you any more stuff, Barb, but would you also be able to schedule a, uh, or to, to, to set a, a, a meeting for rules for the 22nd at 6:00 PM?
Um, yeah, but you're gonna announce that at the next.
Yes.
Rules. Yeah. I'll note it, but, yeah.
Sorry, Barb. I know you're late.
All right. Well, thanks.
See you later, Barb. See you later, Tom.
Bye.